Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone. We will call this meeting to order. Before we get into the agenda, I did circulate to council members last night a motion for consideration today dealing with the Simcoe-Muskoka area being moved back into a gray zone from the red. So in order to discuss that later in the agenda, we would have to waive the rules of procedure. So I do have a motion here resolved that council hereby waives the rules of procedure 4.05B to add item 4.2 under new business for consideration of a motion in regards to the recent move to the gray lockdown level in the provincial framework. So we would need a mover and seconder, councillor Boulanger and councillor Watson. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. I'll ask if there's any disclosure of pecuniary interest. If at some point throughout the meeting you find that you do, please declare it at that time. We have two public meetings today. First public meeting is dealing with the proposed downtown policy amendments. Notice of public meeting was published in the Wasaga Sun newspaper on February 4th and 11th, 2021, and circulated to all property owners within the downtown area, agencies, service providers, and school boards as prescribed in the Planning Act. This provided 20 days of notice for the public meeting, and this meeting is therefore properly constituted as required by the Planning Act. The purpose and effect of the proposed official plan amendment, zoning bylaw amendment, and community improvement plan amendment will be detailed in the presentation by planning staff. Generally, the purpose is to provide more flexibility in policies, include Beach One lands in a consistent zoning category, and include those same lands in the priority investment area of the community improvement plan. As a result of the circulation of the notice of public meeting, the following written comments were received. Letters of support? None. Letters of no objection and Bridge Gas Inc. Not Wasaga Valley Conservation Authority has no concerns and provided comments. Ecology presently unidentified natural heritage features while limited may be present within the OPA area and should be subject to further natural heritage review for footprints of preferred future development alternatives. Ecology and VCA staff defer the direction to from Ministry of Environment Conservation of Parks on species at risk. Engineering and VCA staff are supportive of official plan policies that state natural hazard studies may be required in support of future development applications in regulated areas and may result in refinement to the natural hazard designation limits. Ontario Parks has no specific comments at this time and wish to be notified of future developments. Letters of concern? None. Letters of objection? None. Mr. Wukash, have we received any further letters or correspondence in regard to this application?
Thank you, your worship. We did receive two emails from Mr. Glenn Smale that raised questions about the RFP process, the plan, the need for, and interest in these amendments.
Okay, thank you. Town's planning staff will now make a brief presentation and will provide further details with respect to the proposed town-initiated amendments to the official plan, zoning bylaw, and community improvement plan. So Nathan, I will pass it over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Good morning, residents and members of council. I'm just going to share my screen here so I can run through the presentation with you. Can everybody see the slide there?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. So my name is Nathan Wukash. I'm a senior policy planner with the town of Wasaga Beach. And we have the director of planning and economic development as well here with us today, Doug Heron. We'll be able to answer any questions that you may have when we open up the floor. So just as an, as a order of business today, the purpose of the town-initiated amendments we'll go through. And just wanted to point out that these are town-initiated amendments. They're directed by council. There are three separate amendments to previously approved planning documents, the first being the official plan, the zoning bylaw, and the downtown community improvement plan that were approved in 2018. So really, these amendments make minor adjustments to the downtown policy planning framework and remain substantially the same as they were approved in 2018. The downtown development master plan is still in place, as are, as I mentioned, the official plan zoning policies and framework and the CIP that was approved. So the town continues to work towards implementing the downtown development master plan, focusing on the beachfront and specifically the beach area one lands. So the purpose of the amendments really is to introduce more flexibility and to align with the environmental assessment process that occurred last year for road network improvements to accommodate investment in private land and identify what improvements would be made to the public realm, being the streets that are within the downtown. So many of the changes do relate to the beachfront. The rezoning and community improvement plan changes do specifically relate to the beachfront area. So there are no changes to the land use designations in the official plan amendment that's proposed. And as I mentioned, the official plan policies remain substantially the same as they were approved. So the urban design guidelines that were approved in 2018 also apply. And those urban design guidelines included conceptual road designs that showed the width of some of the roads, the number of lanes, the pedestrian facilities, et cetera. And the town, over the last year, completed a public consultation process through the environmental assessment for the main street and beach areas one and two to determine preferred road alignments and cross-section design, and I'll show you a few of those later. So essentially, we need to adjust the official plan policies to reflect the findings of that environmental assessment. Some of the official plan policies were fairly prescriptive, meaning that they directed public investment in facilities, roads, and roundabouts using language like shall and is proposed to and in accordance with. And the, one of the key pieces of the amendment to the official plan is to soften some of that language so that it reads should be, is encouraged to, and has regard for, and things like that. So the urban design guidelines, as I mentioned, did provide specific conceptual road designs that have now been changed based on the results of the environmental assessment. And so the, there does need to be some flexibility in the policies to recognize that that work has been completed and that, and that further design work will continue based on that environmental assessment. So on the environmental assessment, the environmental assessment, as I mentioned, was completed last year. It's a separate but related process that was led by our Public Works Department and CCT them as a consultant. There is more information available on our website, and you can review that report in detail. One of the key pieces of that was a design for Main Street that had a 30-meter right-of-way and looks like the image on the screen here. So detailed transportation decisions were made through that process that need to be identified in the policy framework. So when we look at Beach Drive, this is where some significant changes were made through the EA process. The preferred design for Beach Drive shifted Beach Drive 7.5 meters inland, identified a 20-meter right-of-way, enclosed, excuse me, enclosed the street to vehicle traffic so that it would be a pedestrian-focused street. The street could be opened to vehicles when required for events and things like that, but primarily the street would be focused on the pedestrian activity as well as storefront retail patios. There would be designated cycle track on, in their right-of-way, as well as a boardwalk and amenity space. So it's quite a beautiful design for the waterfront. And these changes are reflected in the official plan amendment. When it comes to the zoning, the proposal is to identify the lands and rezone them that are shown hatched on the, on the screen here. And the lands would be rezoned from the B2H zone to the B1H zone. And what that does is ensure a consistent zoning across all of the lands within the Beach One redevelopment area. So that does allow for additional height up to six stories and a few additional permitted uses. The proposal is also to permit a takeout restaurant use in the B1 zone as well. So it does increase the development opportunity on these lands. When it comes to the community improvement plan, I just want to give a brief background and refresher on the community improvement plan and explain a bit of how it works. So it is a tool that municipalities have available to them under the Planning Act that allows incentives to be offered. And so any development that occurs must conform to the goals, objectives, and intent of the downtown development master plan. And you can see on the screen some of the key incentives or reasons for the incentives that could be offered through this, this community improvement plan. So the focus of the, I'll call it a CIP for short, is what we called a priority investment area. And you can see on your screen when I pull up this map that the blue area was the...
Sorry, excuse me. I don't mean to cut you off. We just had a message asking if we could just leave the maps up a little bit quicker. I know you're trying to stay on a timeframe, but I think people are just trying to wrap their mind around maybe what, what you're explaining. So if we, maybe on the maps, we could just take a little bit more time. That's all.
Sure, sure. I can do that. Thank you, your worship. And we can always, in the comment and question period, we can always come back to it as well. So we will, we can, we can pop back to any maps that anybody would like to see in greater detail. Thank you. So this, this blue area, as you can see on the screen, identifies the existing priority investment area. And that is the key area in the CIP where incentives are available right now. And the proposal is to add the area identified in green, which mirrors the lands that are being rezoned to B1, to also allow for incentives to be available for those lands. So for the most part, the, the CIP does remain substantially the same as it was approved. So the effect, as I mentioned, was, is to allow more properties in the Beach One redevelopment area to be eligible for incentives, and it does expand that area. It also does soften some of the language to provide flexibility in the eligibility criteria so that development proposals would still generally conform to the OP and zoning bylaw and the general intent of the urban design guidelines, and also conform to the goals, objectives, and intent of the DDMP. So that wraps up my presentation. We have received a number of comments as well on our online platform called Let's Talk Wasaga Beach. So I encourage anybody who would like more information about these amendments to have a look at that site and review the documents in detail. And you're able to provide comments there as well on the online platform. The town will review all the comments in preparation of final recommendations to council. And you can also send me directly any comments or questions that you have as well, and I can assist. So we plan to leave the online consultation open for another week. And so please keep that in mind when you're considering when to provide your feedback.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. As requested in the notice of public meeting, members of the public wishing to provide comment were asked to register in advance at today's virtual public meeting. So I will be calling on the clerk to call those members to speak at the appropriate time. So Dina, I will pass that over to you.
Thank you through you, your worship. We have a number of members from the public that have joined us. The first one on my list is George Calzaretto. Mr. Calzaretto, I do not see anyone with that name listed currently. And therefore, we will move on to the next person, and if Mr. Calzaretto joins, we will allow him to ask his question. Next on the list, I do see Mr. Nick Vininovski. So Nick, if you would please come into the meeting by showing your video. And we'll move on if we can't get Nick to join the meeting. Okay, we're going to move on to Mrs. Angie Salvadis. Angie, are you able to unmute yourself and show your video, please?
Yes, and we have no comment. We're just going to listen.
Okay, thank you then. Okay, next on our list, we have Mr. Phil Hamlet. Here we go. Your worship?
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, you can go ahead and ask your question or make your comment.
Well, I do, I have a few things to talk about, and I've prepared a little bit. So forgive me if I'm reading off the monitor beneath here. We've had, just so that you know, fair disclosure, my wife and I have lived on Glenwood for, for 20 years, nearly 20 years. And we want to acknowledge the huge effort that's gone into this, and we do support the visions of the beach and the work that's gone into trying to make this work for visitors and for us. But we have had some concerns, and they seem not to be really related to the to the changes that are being made now. But we've been trying to get an idea of the vision. Specifically with respect to pedestrians, cyclists, and users of mobility scooters, in particular crossing Main. And that seems to be that the report is really silent about that and the changes that are proposed to River Avenue Crescent and Glenwood where we live. So far, we've managed to confirm, and this is in some back and forth with, with the town, that basically the cross-traffic limitations that are suggested at Main and River Avenue Crescent are intended to make the intersection safe, which is a good thing. The proposal to make Glenwood and River Avenue into two-way streets is required only to support the change on Main and River Avenue. That's my understanding anyway. So the report contends that without limiting cross-traffic, Main and River will need a traffic light in 20 years. But my experience, our experience at that intersection as a driver, as a pedestrian, as a cyclist, is that it's unsafe now and that it has been for decades. The obstructed sightlines there don't just prevent drivers from seeing other cars. They prevent drivers from noticing pedestrians. As it was before the bridge work started with that flashing yellow light, it was just ineffective. If we rely on that, it's really only a matter of time before we see someone killed. Limiting turns and cross-traffic might stop some car accidents from happening at that intersection, but it will do nothing to stop people from being hit. In fact, it might make things worse. Disallowing pedestrians, cyclists, and scooters from crossing Main at that intersection is neither realistic nor acceptable. They'll cross anyway, no matter what you do. And trying to prioritize cars over pedestrians in a resort town at an intersection surrounded by rentals is just not going to work. Adding a dedicated traffic light might help pedestrians cross and other users cross. But if you have that, why would you not use a regular traffic light? The effectiveness and safety of that full traffic light at that intersection has been demonstrated while the bridge is under construction and is limited to one lane. In my opinion, the best solution right now is for the town to be buying the two properties currently for sale that interfere with the sightlines, demolish them, and install the traffic light the way that it's been promised for decades. That would actually solve the problems with the intersection. And it certainly would cost less than messing with Glenwood and making it two ways. And I'll say now that this is not something that's just not in my backyard. There's plenty of space in front of our property to do what we need to do to make Glenwood safe for two-directional traffic and for pedestrians and keeping them separate from the from, from cars. River Avenue Crescent may be wide enough to accommodate two-way traffic, albeit at the expense of cyclists. The report that it's, that's not the same for Glenwood. The report says that the rest of Glenwood can be made like the section in between the library and the OBP. But that section is uncomfortably close, uncomfortably narrow, especially in the wintertime. And the report provides no detail, no direction, no diagram of how the widening would be accomplished. At its narrowest point between Lewis and Main, Glenwood's road bed is currently 16 feet. That would need to be widened at least six feet to allow for two cars to pass. You'd also need four feet on the lakeside for new street signs for the new direction of travel. So we're talking about a minimum of 10 feet of widening to get what still amounts to an uncomfortably narrow street. And that would still not address safety concerns caused by inevitably moving the traffic closer to the pedestrians on a currently unprotected boulevard, not a sidewalk. Especially in winter, if snow clearance works the way it does now, the road will be narrowed by about six feet, and safety is further compromised. We've ran into that the last three weeks when people stopped on the street. And to get by them, you have to go up on the boulevard. Or we could continue, or we could plow the snow completely off the road. But the effect would be with the widening, that some of the houses would be so close that you'll either be covering their front yards or plowing snow into their living window. The narrow road would be particularly tricky when the OBP used Glenwood for emergency response, often at high speed. So we'd also have to relocate on Glenwood. We'd have to relocate sewer grates. They're currently embedded in the boulevard. We'd have to relocate curbs, telephone poles, likely the gas main, maybe Bell. I don't know. That's some serious money. And we'd be investing a great deal, really, to be fixing the problem at Main and River Avenue Crescent. And my last concern is I'd ask you, I'd ask the town whether it's really our intention to promote the use of Glenwood for everyone going to and from the beach from the southwest, places like Collingwood, Granton, Mississippi. We're already seeing an increase in traffic along Glenwood, resulting from people following their GPSes rather than, to Wasaga Beach, rather than looking at street signs. Confused visitors stop by the hundreds in front of our driveway to ask, where's the beach? Or where can I buy a coffee? Or where can I buy lunch? When their GPS, this happens when their GPS tells them your destination is on the left, and all they can see is the town hall. So do we really intend to make Glenwood into an artery, now a two-way artery, by encouraging drivers to bypass local businesses via a tiny residential street? All the, while compromising the safety of residents and visitors? I'm not convinced. I'm not buying that. And it's, it might be possible if we can see something that is akin to what we've seen on Main Street and Beach Drive and on Mosley. But honestly, I haven't seen it, so I can't make a comment on that. So that, those, those are the things that we've been trying to, to get answered by the town for months, a year. And I'm just throwing it out there. But overall, I've got to finish by saying, wow, great job. Great vision. And thank you for doing the work that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlet. I appreciate how much thought you've put into this. And lots for us to consider with what you've shared today, for sure. Nathan, I know after these public meetings, you bring back a report. Is there anything that you can address now, or would you rather wait and address it when you bring a report back for council consideration? And perhaps also reach out to Mr. Hamlet to try and explain a little bit more information about some of, some of the things that he's raised?
Sure, thank you, your worship. Yeah, Mr. Hamlet has raised some, some very valid thoughts as a resident of this neighborhood. And I just wanted to say that we can certainly share your perspective with the folks that will be doing the future design of the road network that comes out of the environmental assessment report. So we will certainly, I can touch base with you, Mr. Hamlet, about your, your thoughts after the meeting. And perhaps direct you to our Public Works Department, and we can facilitate some conversation there. And the one thing I would like to note, though, that the amendments before us today don't get into the finer-grained type of, I guess, impact or policies that would speak to specific intersections or, or those particular roads. The policies mainly provide right-of-way with, for the main collectors and arterials in, in the downtown area. Main and Mosley and Beach and Spruce are the primary roads, so. But we certainly hear your thoughts, and we will direct them accordingly.
Thanks very much. I appreciate that.
And thank you for taking the time today. That's appreciated. And just while it was mentioned, I do want to say that the GPS, for some reason, does, it's connected to town hall here because I've heard that before. So if there's something that staff can, can look at to try and, try and get Wasaga Beach located somewhere else other than town hall, I think that would be helpful to many. So, so thank you again, Mr. Hamlet. Madam Clerk, can you please advise of the next speaker?
Thank you, worship. We now have Jane Sauer. If you're available, Jane. If you would turn on your video and microphone. Here we go.
Hey.
Good morning. Hi, I have a little house three doors down from the town hall.
Sorry, Jane, you mind turning up your volume a little bit? You're really hard to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My speakers are at 100%.
Okay, that, maybe as you got closer, we could hear you a little bit better. We'll all turn ours up as well.
Okay, so we are the owner of a tiny house at 20 Glen Street, three doors down from the town hall. And I wanted to also address the Google post. We often have visitors coming down the tiny street asking where the beach is. So I appreciate you looking into that. And also, I was relieved to see that our little street right now is not under consideration to be redeveloped. So, and I think the beach plans look really great, and I look forward to that development.
Oh, well, thank you very much. And that's it? That's, you have no further questions or anything?
I was just worried about my little house being redeveloped. That's basically, that's going to be redeveloped, that's all. But I think that's not in the plans right now, and I've only had it for seven years, and I would like to enjoy it for the rest of my life. I can't, can't wait to retire to Wasaga Beach.
It's a great place to be. Well, thank you. It's a great place to be. Well, thank you for taking the time to join us this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you introduce the next speaker?
Thank you, Worship. Next, we have Angelo and Andrea. And I'm sorry, I think the last name is Ahonen.
It's Angelo, it's Garachi. I'm not sure we're getting it.
Oh, I must have typed it down wrong. Sorry. I think that was the person before you, actually. Please, if you would turn on your video.
Yeah, I've been trying to, but it got stopped. So it says unable to start. You have stopped my video, it says.
Oh. Um, sorry, last name?
Garachi.
Garachi.
I mean, I'm not that good-looking in the morning, but, you know, I understand. I'll try it again.
Not working? There we go.
Okay. Hi, guys.
Morning.
Morning. Thank you for everything. Thank you for doing this in this tumultuous time. It's certainly a lot less touchy-feely than coming to a meeting, but I guess what works, works. I just have a couple of basic questions as it pertains to the comment where they're making it not accessible to cars on the beach, which is great. And forgive me if some of these questions have already been addressed. I jump in and out on certain things and so I miss things. Do you feel that the parking situation would be adequately dealt with off-site in the area, the surrounding area? And how would it impact the residents and us negotiating the side streets as a result of not allowing vehicular access there? It segues into my next question, which would be the feasibility or the availability of street vendor permits when that happens, making it more of a boardwalk feel. And the last part of that question is, I know that at some point last year during the first lockdown, there had been, and I use this word very guardedly, but a kind of a segregated area for residents to use. And that they're entitled to use sections of the beach, which would then, get me to the last part. If there is parking, will residents receive some type of free pass or discounted parking rate as taxpayers in the area to use their own services?
Okay, thank you. Nathan, I don't know if you're able at this point to answer all those questions with regard to special areas for residents and things like that. But is there some things that you can answer today and the rest we will take under advisement?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I can certainly answer the first question that Mr. Garachi raised, and that is about the parking. So the, as part of the environmental assessment process, the town did undertake a parking study that looked at the number of parking spaces available in and around the beachfront and beyond. And assessed who the owners were and what the shortfall would be if there was potential development that would be undertaken in accordance with all of the current policies. And so there was that report and it did provide some recommendations to the town. So that is certainly an important part of the beachfront redevelopment initiative. The other two questions about street vendor and vendors and sort of like a free pass, those are, I think, questions that I'm not able to answer now. They are good suggestions for the town to think about for future management of and activation of the beachfront. So good suggestions and we can certainly take those under advisement.
Mr. Heron, you have something to add? You're still, you're unmute, Doug.
My apologies. Good morning, Your Worship, and good morning, Mr. Garachi. I can answer the question about the street vendors. One of the reasons for a change in the zoning by law is we are adding the takeout restaurant use. And what we found is when the bylaw was first approved three years ago, that it was lacking when it came to permitting street vendors. And that is specifically the reason why we're adding the use takeout restaurant. And we had an issue with that last summer where somebody wanted to install a takeout truck. And we found that it wasn't feasible. So we had to take a special report to council. So we are addressing that in this proposed zoning amendment.
Thank you. Just for clarification on that, it would be an extension of an existing business on the beach that would be then permitted to have an outlet out front or would be independent permits on the proposed boardwalk area that are not necessarily tied to land in the strip.
So you broke up there a little bit on us, but what you're asking, you have to already have a kind of a bricks and mortar that...
Yeah, are you bricks and mortar or they're going to be issuing permits? Like in a lot of areas, they'll have like a lottery for permits available to create a booth or a truck or something. And often municipalities will get lit on fire by their constituents if they start issuing those permits when you have a bricks and mortar business on that same area. So the question is, are they individualizing it? Or is it only pertaining to an extension of one of the local businesses?
And Doug, are you able to answer that at this point?
Yeah, what I can tell you, Mr. Garachi, is that the zoning by law that's before us at this meeting is simply to allow the use. What you're asking tends to lean towards how the operations of the use and how the town would permit and put in criteria where it could be allowed, how it could be allowed. And that would be a different discussion altogether, which is typically regulated through the bylaw department. So in this instance, what is before us is simply the principle of allowing the use. And then there would be a greater discussion in determining the operations of the use.
Does Your Worship have an opinion on that in the extent of, to the extent of taking it to that next level to allow for that to happen?
What I can say, and you know, all of your council members are here, that anything that we hear today will be something that we discuss, talk about. I completely appreciate the fact that if you own a bricks and mortar location, that you would struggle if somebody else was allowed to come and put something right outside your door. But those are discussions that all of council will have.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you introduce the next person, please?
Thank you, Worship. Mr. Johnny Chu. If you would please come into the meeting.
No question at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. And we now have Paul Clark on the list, Mr. Paul Clark. I actually don't see Mr. Clark in the meeting at the moment. Lily, Ms. Lily Scardicchio. I don't see that person either. Mr. Peter Gribbin. I believe I see Mr. Gribbin here.
Yeah, I, it says that you stopped the video, so I can't stop it.
Okay, I haven't, but I'll ask you to start and see how that goes.
Okay, just.
Yeah, must be a check. There we go.
That issue with Town Hall and the nav system, I've had some issues too. And I've written to Google because they seem to have the wrong postal codes for different addresses. So if they fix the right postal code, maybe that nuisance issue with the Town Hall might be resolved. Could be as simple as that. I don't know. I just thought of that advice.
Grab today's staff will be looking into that one.
Thanks. Good morning, everybody. To me, our beachfront at Beach One has been neglected for somebody. I've been here for fourteen years and I've seen the neglect just take place. So it's really encouraging that we're getting some focus now. The public meeting today, though, to me seems to be a bit of the cart before the horse because until we know what the R F P submissions are going to produce, we don't really know what it's going to look like. And you know, the plans that we're talking about today may need to change again. So it's not a complete picture, although I appreciate the opportunity to have some say. I'm hoping that after the R F P assessment process has gone through its, through the discussions, that we will again have an opportunity for a public meeting to discuss a lot further about what we, the taxpayers, you know, would like to see and what's it gonna look like at that primary of Beach One. And so the only question I have is, will we have that opportunity after the R F P? Because what I've seen in today's official plan amendments, which was approved six to one by council like some time ago. So it's good to see it in action, but you know, we knew this was coming. So one question, will we have a say on all of this once the R F P process has been completed? And also, the funding seems to be a consent for me because we're spending an awful lot of money on the library arena. And
I'm here to discuss this today. We're talking about the plans before us, the official plan and zoning.
Okay, so you don't have any answers to my questions then?
What I will say is we're not discussing the R F P today. We are discussing the matters that were presented by staff in their presentation. If you have questions about the R F P, it is online. You can speak to staff if you have a question about the process rolling out. But those proposals will be coming in this week and we will be going through the proper process for that to evaluate them. What's before you today is the official plan, the zoning, and the developers who are submitting to the R F P will be adhering to those. They know what they are. They're aware of the proposal coming forward today that we're discussing. So if you have any specific questions about what staff had presented?
You don't need to get upset with my questions. All I'm asking is, will we have another opportunity when the R F P is completed to have a public meeting? Because it's our money you're spending. What's wrong with that question?
When the R F Ps come forward, they will go through the proper evaluation process. And the council will be, there will be times that things will be public from those R F Ps, but we are not discussing the R F Ps today. We are discussing.
I'm asking you to discuss the R F P. I'm asking, will it be another public meeting once we have all that information available?
Are you talking about what is being presented in the R F Ps for a public meeting? Because we are not discussing those R F Ps today.
Oh, yes or no? Could have been an easier answer. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please introduce the next speaker?
Thank you, Worship. The next speaker is Ms. Fay Ego. Fay, if you would turn on your, and I hope it isn't saying that I've stopped your video as well.
Good morning. Well, I think I'm sticking to the two issues. So, good morning, and I really do welcome this opportunity to have a public meeting, even under the tough circumstances of COVID. And I can see a lot of people can't get in, but I'm pleased that we can at least start this engagement. So as President of the Wasaga Beach Right Pairs Association, I have been asked by one of our members to present his comments and questions this morning. So I'll do that. And then after I present that one, I would like to speak to the C I P. So this letter was addressed and it is official plan amendment number double X, the downtown development master plan. It says, as a Wasaga resident, I have reviewed amendments to the O P A fifty-two and have some questions and general comments. The adoption of the proposed amendments will result in an official plan that is less prescriptive, very general in nature, and open to ongoing interpretation by current and future councils, municipal staff, property owners and developers. It would be interesting to know what is the problem with the current plan? Who proposed the amendments and for what purpose? It is asked, was it the consultants retained by the municipality? Does anyone answer these as I go along? It would be helpful. I have about four. So maybe Nathan or Madam Mayor?
Yeah, we'll go stop. Nathan or Doug, you want to be like, answer that, please?
Was it, was it the amendments, were they proposed by the consultants retained by the municipality?
Okay, we've heard your question, Fay, and I'm going to.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. The amendments are partly driven by discussions with council and also largely driven by the environmental assessment that was performed over the past year. And the process typically is that the official plan policies are fed and guided by background reports. And the official plan itself is an agglomerate of the recommendations that come out of these reports. In this case, it's the environmental assessment that is driving a large part of the proposed official plan amendments that are before us. Some of the changes, for instance, the zone change from the B two to the B one on the beach area one lands is something that is a consideration of council. And the direction there is to upgrade the potential for those lands. So in essence, the changes are driven by background studies, which had not occurred at the time in two thousand eighteen when the original official plan was first brought forward. So this is a tweak to that first official plan. And the main body, the principle and guidance of that original approval is still in place.
Fay, do you have another question, Fay? She's on mute. I don't know if it's on this end or.
Fay, hi Fay, you'll have to unmute yourself because we're getting some feedback, so I'm muting between questions. Oh, I see. Okay, I gotcha. Okay, thanks. I'll watch for that. Thanks. So I'd like to address a few examples, or in this letter, sorry. A few examples of the proposed less prescriptive wording changes are as follows. Flexibility based on council's direction. Instead of shall, the wording changed to may be. Shall becomes encouraged to in several instances. Will be considered instead of shall. Shall become should at a minimum of seven times. New development should generally conform to the intent of the approved downtown urban design guidelines instead of shall, as per the current bylaw. New buildings should have regard for the downtown urban design. Guidelines has been changed from shall at least five times. Should generally conform to the intent of the downtown urban design guidelines instead of shall. Over many years, a number of professional studies have been completed in conjunction with several well-attended public meetings. The result of the various studies is a clearly defined set of development standards designed to achieve consistent, high-quality and sustainable developments in the O P fifty-two designated area. Since a major portion of the future development will occur on lands owned by the taxpayers, I feel that every effort should be made to ensure that all future development complies with the previously approved standard respectively submitted by Ron Martin, Wasaga Beach Residence, W B R A member. That's his letter. So just to reiterate, this is me now. I want to make sure I understand. The town has spent thousands of dollars to hire consultants and using staff time to analyze, review and present an updated official plan. A process that took many months. And now, council, you are proposing wording changes to specifically allow deviations from the official plan. Deviations that, from what I understand, could be anything from six-floor condos to who knows what a developer may imagine. And these deviations will not need to be subjected to a public vetting kind. Is that correct?
So unfortunately, last term of council, when decisions were being made down there, there was a number of studies that should have been done beforehand, such as an environmental assessment and those types of things that would have guided it a lot better than where we sit today, which we've had to review it and look at it. But Doug, perhaps you could speak to that, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. With regard to the density and the height of buildings, none of those policies are being affected or changed. So much of the
I'm sorry, Doug, I just couldn't hear what you said to the buildings. I just missed those words.
Okay, I'll start over.
Thanks.
So the comment was made that there were studies that had previously been done and the resulting O P policies and zoning policies reflected a built form. And that built form continues. It is not being changed through this current official plan amendment or zoning by law amendment that's under consideration right now. or zoning by law amendment that's under consideration right now. The, the comment that the current OPA is, uh, very prescriptive is accurate. And, uh, the changes to soften that prescription is largely reflected with changes that are coming through the environmental assessment. So, um, currently, uh, the official plan requires roundabouts at various locations. However, the proposed change before us are reflected in the environmental assessment and allows for some deviation. So the, the proposed change, uh, i- is basically affected by the studies that are currently and most recently performed, but which had not been performed prior to two thousand and eighteen, when OPA fifty-two was first approved.
Right. So to, to make it very clear, there was, um, pictures of roundabouts and, and things put, put in place, but, uh, the proper study was never done to show that they, um, should be located in those, those places. So we've gone through the proper process now and there are changes that, uh, need to be made because it makes sense. Do you have another question?
Okay, thank you for that. And, um, I just, I guess I'm mainly worried about the, the verbiage. But it, you know, does it dilute it and, and weaken then the town? So that's my question on that. Thank you.
Thank you for
Yeah, now I'll, I'll try not to make any noise with my would really like to, um, express some comments and concerns regarding the CIP on behalf of our members and the taxpayers. Hang on one sec. I need a drink of water. It's nice to see the wind stop howling today. Hmm. Anyway, the phrase community improvement plan has a really nice ring to it, I feel. However, I'm very concerned, um, your honor, that in two thousand seventeen, at the committee of the whole meeting, you vehemently opposed it then. In fact,
Sorry Fay, could you re- repeat the first part of that? I, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, okay.
There that is really
Sometimes I have a loud voice. Okay, how's that?
Sure.
Thanks. So I've said the community improvement plan has such a nice ring to it. But however, um, your worship, I don't understand in two thousand seventeen, at the committee of the whole meeting, you vehemently opposed it. In fact, you stated, and I'm quoting your words, you said, "I am more concerned about the power the CIP will give council and the town in this situation." It gives a greater ability to expropriate land, make deals with developers for that land. And you say, "In my opinion, it will not benefit or financially profit the residents or community pool, rather just a handful of people." You then went on to say, "We are calling it a planning tool, but by the end of the day, by putting the CIP in place, it makes it easier for the municipality to expropriate." You then asked staff if that was correct, and Nathan and Doug and Andrew, I believe, had a discussion. And after an explanation was given, you retorted, would not argue with staff. However, you do go on to say, "The reality is by having this CIP in place, I believe it makes it much easier for the municipality to go in, expropriate, choose to sell it at a lesser amount to a developer, maybe even for free." You state, "That is my understanding of it. That is what I believe this will do, and I will not be supporting them." So my question is, why the change? Why the change of heart now?
So you're, you're correct, Fay. Uh, the change of heart is completely different council members sitting around this table with a different plan in place. There was expropriation going on last time, and I know that what that cost us, and it really didn't make a whole lot of sense. Um, there was a number of things going on, and I've addressed that several times. Um, this council is not looking at expropriating people's lands like perhaps last term of council was looking at. So, um, things have changed from last term and, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. But thanks for, uh, reiterating all of that. Do you have any other questions today, Fay? Yeah, somebody's gonna have to unmute.
Yep, now I unmuted. Just one last, basic one question is, so you, you are proposing strongly, but now you wish to expand it. Now, I know in the, uh, on your PowerPoint today, and you don't have to bring, well, yeah, I wouldn't mind the map coming up. Um, in your PowerPoint, you say that the downtown community improvement plan remains substantially the same. Well, it does except for the beachfront. And if, if Doug or, um, Nathan could pull up that screen, that would be great. And hello?
Yeah, um, he's
Yeah, sorry, thanks.
Looking on it, just give him a second.
All right. Yeah, so you say it basically remains the same in that blue area. Well, it does further back, but it really doubles it on the beachfront. So I strongly disagree that it remains substantially the same. Um, so
Just, I'll go to, to Doug or Nathan for that, but I think with the, the comment was the, the community improvement plan itself stays the same. Yes, the area is being expanded. Um, why it was not expanded, uh, across the entire area last time? Well, that was, uh, I guess council of the day's decision, but it, it really just makes sense to make all of the property the same down there. But Doug or, or Nathan, I can't see my full screen here, so.
Okay, that's fine. I can continue with this. That's fine. Um, so what I guess I'm asking is now, is it theoretically possible with the changes you are proposing that six-story condos, six-story, four-story condos could now really line our, our really precious beach? Could that be possible? Not saying that will happen. I'm just asking, could it happen?
Nathan or Doug?
Um, thank you, your worship. Uh, I think the answer is absolutely it is possible. The, uh, the principles of the CIP and the official plan and the downtown development master plan and the zoning by law, they all tend to work together, uh, to encourage, and, and that is the real word here, to encourage the development that the town would like to see in these areas. So I, I think the simple answer is yes, it is entirely possible.
No, you're, you're on mute, Fay.
Thank you, Doug. I, I appreciate that. Um, and that's really what I have to say.
Okay, thank you for taking the time to join us today. Madam clerk, our next speaker.
Thank you, your worship. Um, that is the, the end of the list. However, I'd like to circle back to some of the members that, uh, we couldn't, or some of the public members that we couldn't, um, get on before. Um, I do see Mr. Nick Vidunovsky is on the, um, meeting. Mr. Vidunovsky, are you able to, um, come to the meeting at this point? I don't think he's there. Um, and that, um, is concluding the public meeting if we, uh, we don't have those other members that are able to join.
Okay, um, we're sure Mr. Vidunovsky's unable to connect.
I have been, uh, asking him to unmute and asking him to start his video. However, it just looks unresponsive.
Okay, I would just ask, um, anyone who is maybe on the list that, um, didn't show up today or, or for whatever reason couldn't get on, maybe staff could follow up with them and just make sure that we do hear their, their concerns or comments and questions. And, uh, just to make sure that we do, um, have that recorded and, and know what those concerns are.
Is there an opportunity to just ask one quick question in regards to something that Fay said, I believe?
Okay, I don't know who's speaking right now.
Because again, our video is off. We're not able to turn it on.
Hmm, that's an, that's an issue, Mr., um, find you. I'm, I'm not actually stopping anyone's video, so
Yeah, it's just happening automatically. So, and then we're not able to start it until you do what you just did, so.
I didn't do anything just now, just so you know.
A little bit of magic. You just over the board and it.
So nor- normally, once somebody's had their opportunity to speak, we, we don't let them jump back in, but please go ahead.
Yeah, my apologies for that, and the procedure is new to me. So, um, just very quickly, as it pertains to the, uh, provincial building code being a prescriptive building code, and then municipalities and their bylaws typically design their bylaws in order to be read in conjunction with prescriptive building code for the purpose of interpretation. It might to understand that the softening of the wording of the bylaw is going hand in hand with the fact that the provincial building code then allowed these six-story, uh, dwellings, wood-framed dwellings. And it softens, the idea to soften the actual municipal bylaws to be more in line with what's provided as, uh, an option in the provincial building code?
Uh, Doug, could you answer that, please? You're on mute, Doug. You're, you're still on mute.
Okay.
I've said that more this year, um, than anything else.
Third time's a charm. Um, thank you, Mr. Karachi. The, um, the, the zoning by law really deals with permissions for uses. Uh, it's not directly linked to the criteria in the Building Code Act. Um, the, the, uh, the one, the zoning by law establishes uses, heights, um, setbacks, uh, coverages. So how the lands can be used, whereas the building code is more structural and looks at the safety of the building. Um, there is really not much of a correlation, particularly at the provincial level, in terms of putting those two documents together. They do naturally, um, um, they do naturally work together though. Um, so I'm not sure if I'm completely answering your question, save it, except to say that they're, they're not directly linked.
Yeah, I mean, they have to work together because part of the person, the process for obtaining a building permit for any construction is you need to do your PPR before you go through it. So, and zoning pertains to that. My question is, it just seems like that the softening of the town's bylaws are being done, and it's not a bad thing. It's just a comment to allow for, uh, some of the flexibility that's been built into the prescriptive building code for various forms of construction that weren't around in the last five years. That's all.
So I think, um, just on that note, I don't know that that's been a, a big focus. I think it was more, um, we have to be realistic when people are developing as to if, if they can't, if they could go a little bit higher, it may, maybe makes, um, for a better product down the road because they can invest more and, and it has to be financially viable for them. But I would suggest, um, that you reach out to our chief building official and maybe he can, can speak to some of that as well. But I don't believe that that was a, a main, um, goal of ours to, um, look at stick building versus something else.
All right. Thank you for that. And sorry for the add-in, and I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Dina, I'm gonna ask one more time if Mr. Vidunovsky's happened to pop in before we close this, this portion of it.
Uh, thank you, worship. I've just asked one more time for, uh, Mr. Vidunovsky to unmute and show his video, and I'm not seeing any, uh, response there.
Okay, thank you. Again, uh, if staff could just follow up with anyone who, um, wasn't, was listed but not able to speak today, then that would be great. And now I will ask members of council if they have any questions or comments with regard to the proposed amendment. Deputy Mayor Bray?
Thank you. Uh, I just have, I have one question, I guess, for clarity. The official plan, so where we're changing from B two to B one, that area of land sits in the middle of two areas that are zoned, B one already. Both of those areas could effectively see a six-story condo today, correct? And all we're doing is making that little piece in the middle consistent? Or did I miss something? Like, we're not changing the entire beachfront to suddenly allow something that's never been allowed. I think we're just filling in that little hole in the middle? Am I correct?
Doug? To you, your worship, the, the statement is, is correct. The intention in changing the zoning by law is the middle portion of the beach, um, is, uh, to bring it to a B one zone from the current B two zone. And that would actually allow for a greater amount of development. Uh, the B one zone allow, has a, a slightly greater number of permitted uses. It changes, the B two zone allows a four-story height, B one zone allows a six-story height. B two doesn't allow as much coverage. The B one allows greater amount of coverage. So at the end of the day, the change to the zoning by law would increase the permissions for the density of use, um, uh, across the entire beach, but particularly in that middle section.
Thank you, and it will do it consistently, which is, I think, important to, to me as a member of council.
Okay, thank you. Council Bellego?
Uh, yes, thank you, your honor. I, the only point, uh, I'd like to make about today is, uh, we're conducting the meeting at nine o'clock. Uh, we've had many public meetings and I certainly understand the restrictions of COVID. Uh, but it was not uncommon to have three hundred and fifty people show up at a public meeting and have, uh, as many as thirty or forty people come to the microphones. So, uh, obviously, uh, having public meetings on Zoom is, uh, seems to be very, uh, restrictive. It, that, it doesn't seem to be something that a lot of our residents are comfortable with. And, uh, the question was asked previously, would there be future public meetings as we get more information? And I would ask that council really look at the timing of these meetings and how we can get more participation because the level of participation today versus uh, what we've had in the past was very disappointing.
Um, a- and again, I think the question that was raised earlier was dealing with the RFP and whether, um, there would be public meetings for input on what the developers were proposing, not what we're talking about today. Um, again, I think that there was people who, um, there definitely was interest because we had people who, um, thought that they had to sign up for this meeting. Um, and then we found out that they didn't really want to speak. They just wanted to watch it. So I think that there is lots of interest. I think that people are aware of it. I think people are just really happy that we're moving forward with something. So Nathan, can you just reiterate if somebody, um, watches this video tomorrow and, and they're, um, interested in providing you some comments? How can they do that?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, people can send, uh, me emails. Um, the, my email address is in the, uh, final slide of the slide deck. That's available in the council agenda from today. Um, also, we do have the www dot let's talk Wasaga Beach, uh, on, dot com, online platform that has a, a special project that highlights all these changes and gives an opportunity to, uh, find out more information about them and, and as well provide a online comment as well. So we encourage people to do that as well. So there, there's, uh, yeah, plenty of opportunity to continue to provide feedback. And we, we did receive, uh, a, a quite a bit of interest in, uh, watching today's, uh, public meeting uh, from, from, uh, residents and members of the public. Uh, so I, I would expect that there's probably a number, uh, watching right now.
Thank you. Council Watson?
Thank you, your worship. I think Nathan's answered most, most of what I was going to say, but I think there's been ample, ample opportunity in the advance of the meeting and during the meeting and after for the public to be engaged if they so choose to be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from members of council? Mr. CAO, did you have anything you wanted to add today?
Thank you, worship. Members of council, no, I think our planning staff have done a really good job answering the questions from, from the public. So I just turn it back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Comments received today will be considered and staff will prepare a report back to council to summarize comments received and provide further recommendations at a future meeting. Anyone receiving notice of the public meeting will receive notice of the decision of council in this matter. If you did not receive the notice and would like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please contact the planning department to leave your name and address to be added to the circulation list or make a written request to the clerk of the town of Wasaga Beach. So, um, thank you, Nathan and Doug. Um, this public meeting is now closed. We will now move on to, um, our next public meeting. Notice of the public meeting was published in the Wasaga Sun newspaper and the town of Wasaga Beach website on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. This provided fourteen days of notice for the public meeting, and this meeting is therefore properly constituted as required by the town of Wasaga Beach notice policy. The purpose and effect of the proposed fees and charges by law amendment would allow for the inclusion of the winter intermittent surcharge to permit winter bur- burials at the Wasaga Beach Cemetery, as was presented at Coordinated Committee on February eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. A bylaw to formal, to formalize the amendment is on today's council agenda for consideration. To date, no emails or letters of concern or objection have been received. Ms. Borland, have we received any further letters or correspondence in regard to this proposed amendment? Or is there anyone who has registered to speak this morning about this?
Thank you, worship. Uh, to date, we've received no, um, registration from the public or letters Thank you, Your Worship. To date, we've received no registration from the public or letters of objection. Again, just to reiterate for council, this is just to allow the town to comply with the directive from the VAO's office in order to allow the winter interments.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'll ask members of council if they have any questions or comments with regard to the proposed amendment. Okay, this concludes the public meeting in regard to the proposed rates and fees to 2021 Amendment Schedule C Wasaga Beach Cemetery fees. So that is now closed as well. Under New Business, we have CAO's report, Engagement of a Fairness Monitor. So Mr. CAO, did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, Your Worship. No, I think the report is pretty self-explanatory. We have completed our selection process, and subject to council approval of this report, I think we're prepared to move forward with a selected fairness monitor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If I could have a mover and seconder for this motion, please? Counsel Foster and Counsel Kinney, the council increased the amount of the chief, the amount the chief administrative officer is authorized to expend to engage a fairness monitor to be present during the evaluation of the submitted beachfront redevelopment proposals to a maximum of $10,000. If there's no discussion, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously? Thank you. Next is item 4.2, which I had requested be added today, so thank you for the support for that. As I'm sure many of you have heard, the, our area, Simcoe-Muskoka, was moved from a red to gray, and that has upset many. There's a lot of confusion as to why it was needed and just the unfairness for many in this situation. So we're just looking for a fair resolve to the matter, and, you know, all councils are now discussing it and looking at ways to be heard by the province and by Dr. Gardner, and that has prompted today's motion. So I will read the motion and then look for a mover and seconder. Whereas the province of Ontario announced on February 26, 2021, that it would activate the emergency break in the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit, moving the region into the gray lockdown level within the public health framework effective Monday, March 1, 2021. And whereas the province took this action based on the advice of Dr. Charles Gardner, Chief Medical Officer of Health for the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit, based on concerns about the number of COVID-19 variant cases in the region. And whereas Dr. Gardner indicated on February 28, 2021, that the most recent weekly COVID-19 statistics have shown the number cases declined this past week, and most of the public health indicators show the health unit at either red or orange level. And whereas it has been shown that when Simcoe-Muskoka moved to the red level on February 16, 2021, small businesses took appropriate steps to ensure both their employees and customers were able to transact in a safe environment. And whereas moving to the gray lockdown level imposes restrictions on small businesses that are unfair and unjustified in comparison to the restrictions imposed on large retail stores. And whereas there is no evidence of significant community transmission of COVID-19 occurring in small businesses. And whereas the restrictions in the gray lockdown level limit access to physical fitness and recreation programming and negatively impact the mental health of children, young adults, and other members of the community. And whereas there are alternatives to imposing the gray lockdown level to protect the most vulnerable in the community, such as accelerated vaccinations in Simcoe-Muskoka and reinforcing public health protocols. And whereas the Town of Wasaga Beach has supported the provincial leadership on matters pertaining to COVID-19 in the past, but is struggling to make sense of this most recent decision. Be it resolved that the council of the Town of Wasaga Beach formally requests the province to release the emergency break for the Simcoe-Muskoka District Health Unit and return the area to the more appropriate red level under the provincial COVID-19 framework. And be it further resolved that the council of the Town of Wasaga Beach formally requests that the provision of notice where a region's framework level is changing be provided in more timely manner so that municipalities and businesses can adjust their operations accordingly. So if I could have a mover and seconder for this motion, please? Counsel Belanger and Deputy Mayor Bray? And is there any discussion? Counsel Kinney?
Thank you, Your Worship. I don't want to second-guess our healthcare professionals at all, and my comments are not ever meant to do that. However, I think our public and our communities are getting second thoughts and confusing thoughts on where municipality like Muskoka, Simcoe gets put into a gray, and yet our school boards are still allowed to function. You know, we're looking at keeping everybody safe, and as Your Worship had mentioned, during that short little area of time that we could visit, small businesses, I did see a lot of them do their best to make sure that, one, their staff and their people are safe. So I hope all municipalities look at this letter, and if they choose to, because everybody's a little bit different, support it, and I think many will. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I do want to, to the small businesses out there, but also to groups like our minor hockey, who they have scrambled and tried to get things up and running, and kids and parents, and everybody was really excited and found safe ways that they were going to be able to get on the ice, and to have such a quick turnaround that, you know, those hopes were just crushed on Friday. And it really, people are really struggling with this. So it's business, but it's also that other piece to it that we really need to be thinking about. Deputy Mayor Bray?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to thank you for jumping on this on Friday when it first came out. I certainly think within our region, you were one of the first mayors to actually push back and say, "Please explain this, it doesn't make sense, it's not fair, it's not consistent." And it's very confusing. As Counsel Kinney pointed out, our kids are still going to school, our grandkids are still going to school, yet we can't go to the gym. You know, as grown adults who are responsible for our own safety, we can't go to our hairdresser or take our dog to the groomer. So, and those small businesses, they've worked hard, they've spent money, they're fighting for their financial lives, and I think these decisions are probably made a little too quickly sometimes. So thank you for, you know, for sticking your neck up, because being the first one to speak out is never a comfortable position. But I really do respect your leadership role in this pushback, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Counsel Wells?
Such an important issue, Your Worship. I just wondered if you would reread the motion.
No, it was way too long. Counselor Foster?
Said French, too. Your Worship, I, again, I've had concerns with this going forward, and I've said previously that there seems to be a lot of finger-pointing at different levels, left, right, and center. And the province, in spite of the premier referring to me as his friend all the time, I think they're, at this point, looking for people to blame, and the small businesses seem to be the target. Larger businesses don't have the same thing. And to me, it's always been the onus to deal with this is really on us, not, not somebody else. And so the government has to get vaccines in our arms and all that. That's fine. But it's not, if I go to my corner store, you know, there's a guy there who runs it who's trying to make a living. Anyway, I think the onus is on the individual, and the province at this point is trying to push it externally, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, oh, Counsel Belanger?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you as well because, Your Honor, because I felt this was important and unfair, and I believe that Wasaga Beach has demonstrated that we have done an exceptional job through COVID. Certainly, as a municipality, we have one of the very lowest case counts, and it's certainly been my observation, for the most part, that our businesses and organizations have taken this very seriously, so thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely been a team effort between staff, council, and the community as a whole. So kudos to Wasaga Beach. I think we've been doing pretty, pretty well. So I have read the motion. I will ask all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to bylaws, if I could have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Kinney and Counselor Watson, resolve that the following bylaws be received and be deemed to be read a first, second, and third time, passed and numbered as follows. 2021-19, a bylaw to amend by law 2020-126, being a bylaw to establish fees and charges to be collected by the Corporation of the Town of Wasaga Beach. 2021-20, a bylaw to appoint a full-time municipal law enforcement officer and property standards officer for the Town of Wasaga Beach. 2021-21, a bylaw to authorize the entering into of an agreement between the Town of Wasaga Beach and Her Majesty the Queen in Right of the province of Ontario, as represented by the Minister of Transportation for the Municipal Transit Enhanced Cleaning, MTEC. And 2021-22, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the Corporation of the Town of Wasaga Beach at its special meeting held Tuesday, March 2, 2021. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.